The current mayor of Daly City, and I'd like to welcome all of you to our reorganization of the Daly City Council. If I can have everyone please stand for the pledge to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic. For Richard Stanton. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni.
I saw her earlier. Oh, there she is. Pam, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Present.
Ms. Manalo. Dr. Rod.
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura. Mr. Sylvester.
Present. Thank you so much. Before we move on, I would like to acknowledge the elected officials on call with us this evening. I'll first start off with Congresswoman Jackie Speer. Hello, Congresswoman.
Hello, how are you?
Great, thank you. State Senator Scott Wiener. Okay. Assemblymember Phil Ting. I'm sure their time is very valuable, and I'd like to acknowledge them, and if they don't answer, I'm sure they'll probably be in within a few minutes or so. And Danica Halverson, our City Treasurer of Daly City. Okay. We have other elected officials. Congratulations to the new council member of Millbury, Anders Fung. Congratulations to the reelection of Manufo Leaga Anoye, Board of Trustees for the Jefferson Elementary School District Governing Board. And Mr. Rick Abellana, Board Trustee for the Bay Shore Elementary School District. We have the following appointed officials. San Mateo County Poet Laureate, Ms. Eileen Casaneto. Daly City Commissioners, Planning Commissioner, Mr. Ray Satori. Arts and Culture Commission, Dr. Arlene Dasmagual. Nancy Rodriguez. Elizabeth Espinda. And Dori Panisa. From our Recreation Commission in Daly City, we have Ms. Christina Luna, Louis Landos. From our Library Board of Trustees, Ms. Justine Santos. And from the Small Business Commission, Paloma Concorda. Let's see, did I miss any appointed officials or elected officials?
Mayor, we do have some registrants that just registered, and one of them is Kalima Salahoudin from the Jefferson Union High School District, and Gina Poppen from the Millbury City Council.
Thank you, Stephen. Good evening, folks. Thank you for joining us. It's a pleasure to have all of you here. So I would like, at this time, to call to Madam City Clerk to read the certification of the official canvas of votes cast. Madam City Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mark Church, Chief Elections Officer of the County of San Mateo, State of California, hereby certifies that an election was held within the boundaries of the City of Daly City on Tuesday, November 3, 2020, for the purpose of submitting Measure Q to qualified electors. Measure Q passed with 72% of the vote. Furthermore, Chief Elections Officer Church certifies that an election was held within the boundaries of Daly City for the purpose of electing Annette Hippona for City Clerk, Danica Halverson for City Treasurer, and Jessalyn Manalo and Glenn Sylvester as council members for four years. The record of the votes cast is available for viewing in the office of the City Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and congratulations to everyone. And what I would like to do at this time to turn it over to Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura. Ray?
Thank you.
If I may, sorry, Mr. Mayor, we do need to have a vote on the adoption of the resolution for the certification.
Absolutely. So, thank you, Madam City Attorney. I'll entertain the motion to adopt the resolution as per the results presented by the City Clerk.
So move.
Okay, we have a first, is there a second?
Second.
Good. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura. Mr. Sylvester.
Aye. Thank you so much, and that motion has passed. Okay, moving on, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to just sort of facilitate the administration of oath to the incoming elected officials. And so the first up is the administration of the oath to Councilmember-elect Jessalyn Manalo. And Ms. Manalo, would you state for the record who will be swearing you in tonight?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. I have a great big handful that Congresswoman Jackie Speer will be providing my oath of office.
Great, sounds great. So ladies and gentlemen, let me present to you the Honorable Congresswoman Jackie Speer.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Let me also extend my congratulations to Glenn Sylvester, who will be re-elected and sworn in this evening, and it's now my great honor to provide and administer the oath of office to Jessalyn Manalo. I hope you're going to have that young man on your lap as you take the oath of office. This is a civic engagement opportunity for all of us.
Thank you, Congresswoman.
All right, well, we welcome Ethan, and we welcome his sister in a matter of weeks, I understand. So never let it be said that you can't be Vice Mayor and conduct a lot of business and procreate at the same time, so congratulations, Jessalyn. All right, it's my now, my privilege to administer the oath and to thank all of you who have joined in a great American tradition. All right, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye.
Aye, Jessalyn Manalo.
Name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I think my, it says my internet connection. That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Congresswoman Jackie Speer.
All right, Ms. Manalo, you have the floor for your comments.
Thank you so much. I am so grateful to all the supporters, the voters that re-elected me for another four years to serve the community, and really could have not done this without my family, my husband here, L., come in real quick, and my, and also my family, my mom and dad, who have been wonderful in helping me with Ethan when I needed a campaign. But to all, also my colleagues on the council that, you know, endorsed me to continue to work with them, you know, Councilmember Buena Ventura, Councilmember Rod Dasmagual, and also Mayor Glenn Sylvester, Supervisor David Canepa, if you're in the audience, and super humbled Congresswoman Jackie Speer for your endorsement this election, along with Assemblymember Phil Ting, Senator Scott Wiener, but really also the community grassroots effort of this campaign from childhood friends who grew up in Daly City, to, you know, colleagues along the way in my work, and I think, you know, just really everyone who put their volunteerism, who donated their money, and really believed in our message and able, our ability to impact the City of Daly City and continue the work. And so I am with a huge grateful heart and honor to continue the work in this city. So thank you, thank you to everyone. I am, my heart is full and I'm ready to get to work. So thank you so much.
Whoops. Fantastic. What happened to that? Oh, nice. Oh, wow. So there's your certificate of election, and did I read something the other day that Justin Manalo got the highest vote totals for any city council race in the history of Daly City?
Councilmember Buena Ventura, Mr. Mark Church, to certify that, that is the case. So a big thing almost to every single voter, we made his, her story this election.
Congratulations, wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Manalo. Okay, next up, we have the administration of oath of Councilmember-elect Glenn Sylvester. Mr. Sylvester, would you state for the record who will be swearing you in tonight? Mr. Sylvester, are you on? Where'd he go? I think he may have dropped off. Oh, here he is. I'm gonna admit it again. Mr. Sylvester, are you on? There he is, connecting to you. All right, you need to unmute, Mr. Sylvester. All right, there you go. So next, you're up. So this is the administration of oath to Councilmember-elect Glenn Sylvester, and Mr. Sylvester, could you state for the record who will be swearing you in tonight?
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. It gives me great honor. We've gone through this before, and I try to share it amongst my family members, and I remember my youngest daughter was unable to appear at one of the meetings, so now this is her chance. So Ms. Chrisalyn Wells will be administering the oath, and I have one of my sick grandkids here. Chrisalyn, where's your, where's your, where's your son?
Oh, okay, hold on.
Another one of the grandkids.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wells, you can unmute yourself and take it away.
Hi, Papa. Come in. Hi, Papa.
Thank you. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Glenn Sylvester.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation free.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties about which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Sylvester. You are now free to make your comments.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I have to echo the same sentiments as my colleague Jessalyn Manalo. Wow, it's been a great four years thus far, and I'm sure you've heard the term late bloomer. I am a late bloomer, but serving for the constituents in the City of Daly City is a labor of love. I thank you all who have supported me along this ride to be here today, and I thank you all so much, my family, staff of Daly City, and everyone. You all know who you are. And again, thank you so much, and as my favorite saying goes, you are not alone. Thank you, and let's do this. Thank you so much, Mr. Buena Ventura.
Fantastic, congratulations, Mr. Sylvester. And here we have before you another certificate from Mark Church, our Elections Officer, congratulating you and certifying your role again as Member of the City Council. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the administration of oath for our City Clerk. Miss Hippona, would you state for the record who is going to swear you in?
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. My son Christopher is here in my office, and he is going to give me the oath. So he'll ease off on the side here, not in front of the camera, but I'll repeat after him. May I start now?
You do.
Thank you. I, Annette Hippona.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation free.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties about, upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. I'd like to say a few words. Thank you. I'd like to thank all of those who participated in this historic election. It is truly an honor to be able to continue to serve as your Daly City Clerk. I want to send a special thank you to my campaign team, my supporters, and my family. But I believe this is no time to focus on a personal victory in this election. The whole world is in crisis that demands that we turn our concern toward others. This is a time for compassion for all our community who are suffering from the effects of COVID-19. We pray for those who are ill and those who have lost loved ones to this terrible disease. We pray for those brave healthcare workers who are risking their own lives to others, and we pray for those who have lost jobs and businesses. We send our prayers and gratitude to essential workers who go to work every day to keep us safe and to provide all the services we need to survive. This holiday season is a time to reflect on what we can do to make this world a better place for all of us. Let us all celebrate a commitment to work towards a world that celebrates democracy and is more just for all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura.
All right, now we turn to the administration of oath to our City Treasurer-elect, Danica Halverson. Ms. Halverson, would you introduce your guest who will be swearing you in?
Yes, my father, Elton Halverson, will be swearing me in tonight.
Great, take it away.
Okay, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Danica Halverson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Ms. Halverson. Way to go. You are now free to make your comments.
Good evening. My father doesn't normally like to speak in public, so it was extremely special to have him swear me in tonight. I'm very honored and grateful to be re-elected as your City Treasurer. I've been fortunate to work for the City of Daly City for over 19 years, 17 of which was within the City Treasurer's office, and to serve as your City Treasurer for the past six years. My primary goal has always been to safeguard and maximize our city's investments. This has been evident in the continued growth of our investment portfolio year after year. I look forward to continue working with our City Manager, Shana Malpe, the executive management team, and our City Council to better serve our community. I would like to thank my family, my parents, Anna and Elton, my sister Natasha, my sons, Jalen and Rainan, and my partner Brian for their unwavering love and support. They continue to be my inspiration and motivation in everything I do. I would like to thank all my supporters during this campaign that have aided in my reelection. I'm humbled to have received endorsements from former City Treasurer, Tony Zidich, Supervisor David Canepa, Mayor Glenn Sylvester, former City Councilmember Mike Congona, and the Daly City Police Officers Association. I would like to thank all our city's essential workers who have worked nonstop during this pandemic. We appreciate all you continue to do to ensure services go uninterrupted. From our police officers and firefighters who continue to keep our residents safe, to our Department of Water and Wastewater staff who have worked around the clock to deliver clean water to our homes and businesses, to our Recreation Department who have worked tirelessly to serve our seniors and help assist in administering thousands of meals to families in need in our community. And the list goes on and on, as these are just a few examples that are a testament to the dedication our city workers demonstrate on a daily basis. Lastly, a special thank you to you, the Daly City residents, who voted for me as your City Treasurer. Although I was unopposed in this election, I'm very humbled and grateful for your vote. 2020 has been a year none of us envisioned. It's been challenging mentally, physically, and financially for so many people in our city and across this nation. I applaud each of you for doing your part in response to the pandemic by continuing to wear your masks and practicing social distancing, and those who have supported local businesses like Original Joe's and Ceremony Mall, who have relied heavily on your support for their livelihood. As we close out this year, I wish all of you a joyous holiday season. Please continue to stay safe and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halverson. Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to that part of the agenda where traditionally, at the end of the year, the mayor gets to present some outgoing awards. So I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Sylvester to present his awards for 2020.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura. You know, I just want to let you know, well, we probably saved that for comments, but you always have such a calming voice, and, you know, it's a pleasure to work with you and to be by your side. So thank you for that. I'm going to start off with various awards throughout our community, and I'm going to provide a small bio, but I know that everybody's time is important, and as much as I would like to embellish more on every individual and organization, I'm going to keep it short because of the time restraint that we have. I'd like to first start off with the Youth's of the Year. This year, I've chosen Chelsea Valerio. She attends the Jefferson Elementary School District. She is known amongst her peers and teachers at Fernando Rivera Middle School for her leadership, stewardship, empathy, and passion. She is motivated, driven, and wholeheartedly a team player. What stood out to me about this young lady is she is especially known for her project in climate change. Congratulations, Chelsea Valero, Fernando Rivera Middle School. Is Chelsea with us this evening? Chelsea, is she, would like to say a few things?
Aye.
Chelsea!
Thank you, thank you. I just like to say thank you to all my family and some of my teachers who are in this Zoom too. I really couldn't have done anything without the support of all my friends and family. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Chelsea, and congratulations once again. For the Male Youth of the Year, I chose Sean Ferri Fiera. He is both a scholar, and he's also an athlete, and he attends Benjamin Franklin Intermediate School. When he is not participating in extracurricular sports activities, he is composing beats in his music class. Sean is a model student and is known to lend a helping hand to others and other students in need. Congratulations, Sean. Sean, are you with us this evening?
Aye.
There you go. Okay, Sean, did you want to make a few comments? You have the floor.
I'd like to thank my mom.
Okay, looks like Sean, you have two, must have two devices going because you have a slight echo. Go ahead, you want to try again? Sean? Okay, you know, as they say with Murphy's Law, technical issues, and when it comes up, it happens. Well, congratulations, Sean, and I wish you the best in the future, and keep it up.
Thank you.
There you go, got you. All right, Sean says, "Thank you." Okay, moving on, as you will see as we move along, something during the pandemic really affected all of us, but these particular individuals and folks coming along has basically played a major, important part of the pandemic, and this pertains to food insecurity. I consider this one of the utmost, very important for our constituents in Daly City. So with that being said, from the. So with that being said, from the Jefferson Union High School, I'd like to congratulate Elena Gonzalez. She has played an active role in the community since she was a young child. She currently serves as a youth recreation leader. She volunteers in a variety of community events, including Jefferson's Food Pantry that serves well over one thousand families. Elena's motivation and desire is to help others and to support her lifelong dream to become a pediatrician. Congratulations, Elena. Are you with us this evening?
Good evening. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And I want to send a big thank you to Monty Reyna for nominating me. It's an honor. I want to thank the rest of the council also. I know you guys, there's so many other people that help everyone. And it's amazing that I can bring this back to my community, my school, to show that our work really does matter. And yeah, I just, thank you so much. And I'm going to continue to keep helping whenever I can. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Elena. Again, again, congratulations. You have such a beautiful smile. Keep up the great work you do for the community, and we hope to hear more from you later on in the future.
Thank you.
The next, also from Jefferson High School, is Calvin Louie. Calvin has helped, he loves helping his community since he was in elementary school. He participated in community events hosted by Jefferson High School, PAL, and community organizations like Pacific Islanders Together. When the pandemic hit, Calvin felt an even stronger need to give back to his community and volunteers at Jefferson's Food Pantry to help thousands of families in need. Congratulations, Calvin Louie. Calvin?
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that's here tonight. And I wanted to give a big, special thank you to my Auntie Reyna who nominated me for this. And to all my friends and family that given me opportunities to help everybody in the community. And thank you, everybody, for helping the community. It really makes a difference in this time. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much again, Calvin. Again, congratulations, and you too have a wonderful smile. Okay, moving on, honorable mentions for volunteerism. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Alita Munoz. She has lived in Daly City for over twenty years with her husband and four children. Alita started as a regular volunteer at Pat's Closet. And when that had to close due to COVID-19 shelter in place orders, she quickly shifted to offering her services by translating and enrolling households for the food programs and COVID testing. She has remained a daily force of good, strength, and hard work at the Community Services Center. Ms. Alita Munoz, ladies and gentlemen. Alita, are you with us this evening?
Hi, yes, she's here. I'm her daughter. She can't speak English, but she wants to thank you, thank everyone. And she loves her time spending in the community center. And yeah, she's very happy and she wants to thank everyone for their recognition.
Thank you so much. Would you kindly please relay to your mom? It's very much appreciated, all that she does and that she continues to do for the community. You know, language is, should not, and will not be a barrier in Daly City. And having her is a tremendous resource is very, very important. So again, thank her, thank you, and we hope that she continues to be a part of our community and keep doing what she's doing. Okay, also for honorable mentions for volunteerism, I have a Maya Oro Gubilau. She is a supervisor for the Daly City Partnership at the Community Service Center. She has been a tireless advocate for the community of Daly City for the past four and a half years. Maya has the unique ability to get things done while maintaining a strong sense of compassion and empathy for our community. During these last ten months, Maya has led the team at the partnership to provide food to over forty thousand individuals and rental assistance to over six hundred families. She is a source of inspiration for the entire partnership team. Congratulations, Maya. Maya, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, I just want to say that it's definitely an honor and a privilege to serve the Daly City community. And I think one of the communities that has the biggest need and the biggest community that, that really, a community service center like ours can have a deep impact. And I wouldn't be here without my parents and the way they raised me. And I appreciate the recognition, but I do feel that this is really a recognition for the Community Service Center as a whole, just powering through. And, you know, when everything else shut down, we were still open. We were helping people and trying to figure out how to scale all of our services for this pandemic. So I really appreciate every member of our team and our administrative staff for just stepping up and serving the community in the face of fear and this global pandemic.
Thank you much, Maya. It has definitely been and indeed a pleasure to provide an honorable mention for you. And thank you for everything that you continue to do, especially for our community here in Daly City. Thank you so much. I, as I'm looking at the screen here, I do see Honorable Gina Pappin, who has logged on. Ms. Pappin won her reelection to the Milbrae City Council and is a strong supporter and very involved also, not only in Milbrae, but also in what happens in Daly City, especially when it comes to bart and transportation for our constituents. Welcome, Gina. The next category is for Volunteer of the Year. This year I chose Ruth Pooy Ali Ihi. She was born and raised in Southern California and has been a Daly City resident for the last twenty years. Her passions include being a wife and a mother. Nothing brings her more joy than the work a full day and returning to her family life. Her faith has taught her kindness and generosity, and she displays these in her volunteerism. Her children have modeled after her and give back and help their community as much as possible. Congratulations, Ruth. And Ruth, are you with us? I believe you're on the Commission for San Mateo. Ruth, you with us?
I'm here. Thank you, man. I'm here. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Ruth.
I just wanted to say thank you. It's, it's an honor to be able to serve in the community, especially with the group of people that I've had the pleasure of working with. Elena and Calvin, I know them, they're great leaders. And I can only imagine how their life is going to lead up to. So I just want to say thank you again. And hopefully we'll be able to get more volunteers out there. But thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ruth, and keep up the great work. The next is a new category that we've never done before. And we titled this the Philanthropic Organization of the Year. Am I coming through? Okay, can you folks hear me? Okay, great. This year, I'm proud and honored to give the Philanthropic Organization of the Year Felix Y. Manalo Foundation Incorporated. This organization provides aid to humanity in a number of ways. For the city of Daly City, that meant bridging the digital divide within our community. Especially stricken by this pandemic was our youth and our most vulnerable, our seniors. In response, the Felix Y. Manalo Foundation donated eighty laptops to the city. It was more than fitting to recognize the Felix Y. Manalo Foundation Incorporated, Aid to Humanity, Humanity, as 2020's Philanthropic Organization of the Year. I appreciate the foundation because not only did they donate to Daly City, but at an event, they also provided laptops to one of our schools here in Daly City, which last year located in Pacifica, and also monetary funds. Congratulations to the Felix Y. Manalo Foundation Incorporated. Do we have a representative from the foundation? Is it Mr. Hernandez?
Hello, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Hi, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well, sir. My warm greetings to everyone. My name is Brother Steve Inosensio, Minister of the Iglesia Cristo Church of Christ. We would like to greet and congratulate our new mayor, Mayor Joselyn Manalo, and City Council Mayor Glenn Sylvester. We greet you, sir. And all members of the City Council of Daly City, public elected officials, and all appointed officials. We would like to also take this time to recognize the presence of Brother GP Santos from our central office located at Quezon City, Philippines. He is here as the representative of our Executive Minister, Brother Eduardo Manalo. A special thank you as well to the President of the Felix Y. Manalo Foundation, Brother Glicer Yubie Santos Jr., for his continued guidance and leadership of the said foundation. And above all, our Executive Minister, Brother Eduardo V. Manalo, for his direction and guidance over the Iglesia Cristo in its entirety. On behalf of the Iglesia Cristo Church of Christ, Felix Y. Manalo Foundation, we are truly honored to receive this award, the Mayor's Philanthropic Organization of the Year Award for 2020. We attribute all of the success and triumph of the church is because of the miraculous hands of the Almighty God. To the dynamic leadership of our Executive Minister, Brother Eduardo Manalo, we will continue to assist this wonderful city in its humanitarian and social civic works to help humanity through our Aid to Humanity programs as well as our My Countryman, My Brethren activities. To the mayor and to the City Council of Daly City, thank you once again. We are truly honored to be recipients of this recognition and award. We return all praise and honor to our Almighty God. Thank you.
Wow, that was very powerful. Merlaming, merlaming, salamat, walang aluman. Thank you for the Felix Y. Foundation, the Manalo Foundation Incorporated, for what they do and that you continue to do, not only here in Daly City, that we have been the recipient recently, however, what you do around the world. Again, congratulations to the Felix Y. Manalo Foundation Incorporated. Okay, moving on, my nomination for the Business of the Year goes to Republic Services. Republic Services has always provided an essential service to our community. But when the pandemic hit, they prioritized employee and customer safety in an effort to provide uninterrupted service to our community. They have assisted hundreds of businesses to navigate through the ever-changing state and local order and its mandates. Republic has also joined the city to take a stance against illegal dumping activities in our city and supports the Clean Daly City Initiative. What stood out to me also that I did not mention is that that is not all that they do. They have done so much for the community in the way of funding various projects. They have also helped many of our 501(c)(3) organizations, even if it means moving for one of our, one of our 501(c) organizations and basically just being there. Congratulations to Republic Services as the Business of the Year. And I believe I may have the CEO, Mr. Travis Armstrong, online. Travis, are you here this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, customers. Look, this, this award is very humbling, especially in a year like this. I've got to know some of you folks a whole lot better. And I'm just so appreciative of, you know, the partnership that we have within the community, whether it's folks down at the PBRC or city staff. Everybody works in conjunction, and that's really reassuring for me these days. So, you know, on behalf of Republic Services, deeply honored to receive this award. Couldn't have done it without our frontline workers, right? Our drivers, recycling coordinators, customer service folks. Everybody has done, stepped up and done an amazing job in such a difficult time. So, again, looking forward to the continued partnership in the future, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong, and congratulations. We really appreciate everything Republic Services continues to do. As you know, Mr. Armstrong is new, but he adapted very, very quickly to Daly City and got to know many of us. And that's a telling story for me because it shows that he cares. He's just not there to run the business, but he cares about our community. Congratulations once again, and thank you for being here with us this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a couple more. The next is the Commissioner of the Year. This year I chose Elizabeth Espinda. She was appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission in January of 2017 and was recently selected as the Commission's Chair for 2021. The Arts and Culture Commission works in partnership with the community to uplift art and culture that is relevant and responsive to the needs of our youth, families, seniors, neighborhoods, and community. You may notice their collaborative work on the electrical boxes around Daly City. And Elizabeth is not alone. You know, I have to congratulate the entire Arts and Culture Commission, for all that matters, all of our commissions. The commission held art exhibits in Daly City Octagon and at City Hall. And now you can join them live for virtual artist dialogues that will continue into the new year. You may have also seen Elizabeth participating in a variety of citywide events as well as DCPLAs, Crazy About Cars, and a number of other community-sponsored events. Thank you so much, Elizabeth, and congratulations. You have the floor, Elizabeth. I just saw you. Oh, there you are. Okay, she's a shy one. You have the floor, Elizabeth. Feel free to make any comments. You have to unmute? Unmute yourself. There you go.
I'm bringing the council commissioners, staff of Daly City, and guests. It is an honor for me to stand here and receive such an award. In behalf of Arts and Culture Commissioners, with your confidence, our mission, and our accomplishment, it is your continuous support that makes our work possible. I would like to thank our City Council, Councilmember Ray Buenaventura, Councilmember Dr. Roger Das Magual, Councilmember Pamela D. Jubani, Vice Mayor Joselyn Manalo, and our honorable Mayor Glenn Sylvester for believing in us. For Arts and Culture Commissioners, I would like to thank our Chair Commissioner, Dr. Arlene Das Magual, and Co-Chair Commissioner Nancy Rodriguez. Your leadership and mentorship for the last three years taught us a lot. As one of our successful projects, the electrical boxes are enjoyable and has a great impact to the community. are enjoyable and has a great impact to the community of Daly City. Commissioner John Boston, your expertise on our creating our website to show the communities and the general public about our past, current, and future events will take this commission to the brighter future. Commissioner Dory Panissa, providing refreshments to all of our events, much appreciated. Our guest goes home without getting hungry. Let us not forget the people behind the scenes supporters that provide our commission day-to-day assistance, arranging our monthly meetings, legal guidance, and more. Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, Lailani Ramos, Charles Morrow, Angela Padilla, thank you for your support. Also, our City Manager Shawna Maltby, your assistance, guidance, and continued support to us, thank you. I can't forget Jose Garcia, our building maintenance, providing our exhibits and events with furniture and recycling bins, making sure the octagon is clean. Thank you. And last but not the least, we don't want to forget former Assistant City Manager Joseph Coran, which also supported us before his retirement. Much appreciated for all your help. Thank you. We, the Arts and Culture, are committed to promoting the arts and services for the community of Daly City. Good evening and thank you.
Great. Thank you, Elizabeth. For those who don't know Elizabeth, we stay in contact all the time. She's always an out-of-the-box thinker and when she comes up with something, I, you know, I just have to shake my head and, but if you don't ask, you don't get. So congratulations again, Mrs. Spinder, and thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor.
Okay. Okay, the last person is the Employee of the Year. Needless to say, since this pandemic has hit, this was a very, very difficult decision for me. Because I appreciate all of our staff in Daly City. And, uh, again, it was so difficult. Within the first few sentences, you probably know who this is. However, I'm going to try to be, uh, vague as possible. But as I read the bio, you'll probably figure out who it is. This particular person wears many hats. Among them, and I'm not going to say any gender, serves as the lead public information liaison for our city. A critical function at any time, but during this pandemic, the skill in creating vital, understandable, and timely public information has proved irreplaceable. We rely on this person to be the voice of our city and the go-to person for our public messaging. At the beginning of the pandemic, this person immediately revamped the city's website homepage to provide the latest COVID-19 updates and a myriad of resources for residents and businesses. This person was also instrumental in the recently launched new Daly City website. This person has demonstrated tremendous work ethic and dedication, ensured excellent customer service to our community and our workers, and provided countless support to the entire City Council. The extraordinary, extraordinary work on the city's sustainability efforts has also put Daly City on the map as a leader in sustainability and climate action. Earlier this year, the city was one of six cities in California to be awarded the Beacon Vanguard Award, the most elite beacon award and the highest honor that can be achieved. I, it gives me great pleasure to provide this award as Employee of the Year to no other person than Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti. Stephen, uh, I did see you a moment ago. Oh, there you are. You're smiling. Okay, Stephen, you have the floor.
I am completely shocked and surprised right now. I was not expecting this at all. Thank you so much, Mayor. I really appreciate it. You know, this past year has been a huge challenge, but it's been really fun to work with you, especially on the weekly PSA videos. And we transitioned to that content really quickly, so that's been great. And also just so happy to work with everyone in the Daly City organization to just serve our community. So thank you. I'm, I'm so shocked right now. I'm surprised that everyone kept this a secret from me, so.
And, and thank you so much, Stephen, and it wasn't easy to do. I guarantee you. It was because you are everywhere and to keep this from you, it was very difficult. So again, congratulations and keep doing the great work, Stephen. You're very well appreciated. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, and distinguished guests, that concludes the Mayor's Awards for 2020. What I'm about to do now is to adjourn the 56th City Council Meeting. And believe me, you'll still have some time to make comments because we do have many folks here. What we're going to do is after we do that, we're going to call to order the 57th City Council Meeting. And this is where we will actually go through the reorganization. So I thank you all for being here and you stay safe and you stay healthy. And what I would like to do is entertain a motion to adjourn the 56th Council, Council Meeting of the City of Daly City. Motion, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I thought maybe you were going to make some outgoing comments. And also, did you award a Citizen of the Year? Did I miss that?
Thank you. And that's why I, I appreciate you, Councilmember Buenaventura. We had Volunteer of the Year and I thought I, oh, oh my goodness. Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Okay, I kind of skipped over this one and, um, please forgive me. It, uh, this is very, very important to me. Thank you, Councilmember Buenaventura. I don't know how I skipped over that. Matter of fact, I'm looking at my paper and, okay, I have it. Thank you. Okay, here we go. I apologize, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me great pleasure to nominate this particular person for Citizen of the Year. A little history, this person and I go back many years to when my son used to play with the Daly City Titans. And I remember her and her family and I and my family would sit up in the stands chewing on salami as we watched the kids play. Today, my son is 26 years of age and he started playing when he was six or seven. And I remember coming home and my daughter told me they signed him up for him to play. And I was so upset, but turned out very well. It gives me great pleasure to give the Citizen of the Year Award to Ms. Rowena Williams-Poti Meafua. She has gone above and beyond the Daly City community. Raina has always had a passion to serve others. For over 30 years, she has utilized her resources to provide food, transportation, and gifts to those in need. And when the need grew exponentially as a result of this pandemic, Raina quickly readjusted and transitioned to serve a greater population in need. In addition to the Food Pantry hosted at Jefferson High School in partnership with Second Harvest and Pacific Islanders Together, Raina coordinated with the Jefferson Union High School District to host a graduation drive-through celebration in Daly City for four district high schools at Jefferson High School. By the way, regarding the Food Pantry, it's my understanding that they served over 2,400 meals every week throughout the pandemic, for those who didn't know. And though through these difficult times, she also showed gratitude for our first responders and frontline workers from the city of Pacifica, Broadmoor, Brisbane, Daly City, and the town of Colma by coordinating with Pacific Islanders Together to provide hot meals, desserts, and a bottle of water at drive-through event calls because we care. While 2020 has been a difficult year, Raina's dedication, leadership, and volunteerism did not go unnoticed. Senator Scott Wiener honored her as 2020 Woman of the Year. Additionally, San Mateo County Event Center appointed her as a board member. And she serves on the San Mateo County Adult Education Advisory Council Board. Ms. Raina, please forgive me. It is my honor to give you Citizen of the Year here in Daly City. Thank you so much. Ms. Raina, are you here online?
Yes, I am. I was like jumping up for joy when you forgot because you, I'm not a, and, and Mr. Buenaventura, Jocelyn Manalo, Pam, all of you, Rod, know that I'm not a, I don't like public speaking. I was getting ready to jump up and joy because I didn't have to. But I am honored. I'm very honored. And before I say my thank you, I first and foremost, I, I give all the glory to our Father God for this opportunity, for blessing me with so much wonderful people that takes the time out to come out and to serve and give back to our community. Through the pandemic, there was no hesitation. They were always there to come out and help, young and old. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for selecting me for the 2020 Citizen of the Year. I am truly humbled, grateful, and honored for this selection. Lastly, I want to thank my husband for being there, supporting through the goods and the bad, as well as my children and grandchildren. Thank you so much. Fafcai, yaviyela tuamone manu yanga, fafcai, fafcai, fafcai lava, and may God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raina Meafua. For, uh, please say hello to Sam for us. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Meafua received the Citizen of the Award under the leadership of then-Mayor Jocelyn Manalo. This is a testament. As we try to spread the wealth, but, uh, it cannot be done. Ms. Meafua, thank you for what you continue to do in Daly City and it definitely has not go unnoticed. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Buenaventura, uh, am I free to go now?
No, you have your outgoing comments.
Oh, uh, doesn't that come later when we make the nominations? I think that, yeah, yeah, I'd rather do it. I'd rather do it later. But thank you, Ray, for always having my back. Okay, I like to entertain a motion to adjourn the 56th Session of the City Council of Daly City. May I have a motion, please?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting of the 56th Council for the City of Daly City is now adjourned. Okay, well, thank you.
Let's now immediately move forward with the meeting of the 57th City Council. So at this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order and we could start by roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Here.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present. Great. Thank you very much, everybody. And now let me turn it over to Mayor Sylvester, former Mayor Sylvester. For any, before we proceed to the nominations for the office of the new mayor, let me ask the outgoing Mayor Sylvester for any comments he might.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Buenaventura. You are trying so hard to get me to say something. And as, as a lot of folks know, I'm not basically a loss for words. But however, I do want to say it before we move on. It's been a trying year for 2020. I did not expect this. And the coming together of council, collaborating together along with our recently hired city manager, has proved and made everything so much easier. Ideas were taken, they were provided, and we acted on most of all those ideas. And those ideas is what to do and keep our community safe and keep our community going. So it has been a tremendous year, being as your mayor of Daly City. I thank my, I thank Lord God, my family, my friends, and everyone in the city of Daly City, to include staff and the constituents of Daly City, for having me as your mayor. Thank you all so much, and I look forward to continuing this passion of love for our community. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Buenaventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like now to turn to my colleagues to offer some comments about our outgoing mayor, Glenn Sylvester. Let me start with our Vice Mayor, Justin Manalo, for some comments directed towards former Mayor Glenn Sylvester. Go ahead, Ms. Manalo.
Councilmember Buenaventura, uh, we have some of those comments coming down later on. I think we'll go through the reorg right now, then those outgoing comments can be made?
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So now let's go ahead and call for nominations of the Office of Mayor. Can I get any nominations for the Office of Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Buenaventura. It gives me great honor and pleasure to nominate Vice Mayor Jocelyn Manalo for the Office of Mayor.
Great. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Mayor? Hearing no other nominations, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second to close the nominations. Can I get a motion?
Motion?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Can I get a, a voice for all those who are to close the nominations for Mayor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the nominations are closed for the Office of Mayor. Having only one nomination for the role of mayor, let me get a roll call vote for the Office of Mayor to be held by Jocelyn Manalo. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
For unity, yes.
Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
And Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Manalo, for now as the Office of Mayor. Before you take over the meeting and the, and resume the office, I'd like to ask you if you have a person who you would like to introduce you and swear you in as our new mayor.
Thank you so much. At this time, I would like to ask Supervisor David Canepa for my open office for mayor.
Great.
Sure. Thank you so much, Mr. Buenaventura. And congratulations to, to all the winners and to those who are on the council. So, Ms. Manalo, will you please raise your right hand? Aye. State your name.
Justin Manalo.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
Well, bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon...
Of the office?
Of the office.
On which I'm about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations, Justin, and Mrs. Mayor.
Congratulations, uh, Mayor Manalo. You can now assume the meeting, Mayor Manalo. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Um, at this point of our meeting, uh, we will now move into, uh, the nomination of Vice Mayor, um, for the upcoming year. And, um, moving into that, I'd like to nominate Dr. Rod Dos Magual.
I'll second.
So we have, uh, first and second. Are there, uh, any other nominations on the floor? Seeing, oh, go ahead.
Move to close the nominations.
Fine, um, we will have a roll call up.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
For unity, yes.
Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Manalo, your voice is, um, trailing out, so you might want to get maybe closer to the mic.
Congratulations, Dr. Rod Dos Magual.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
At this point, uh, Dr. Rod Dos Magual, do you have someone that would like to, uh, give you the oath of office?
Yes, I have Dr. Allison Tintianko Kubalis to administer the oath.
Dr. Allison Tintianko Kubalis, uh, please give, uh, the honor of the oath to Dr. Dos Magual, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the awardees and everyone who's been elected. I appreciate all your service to Daly City. Congratulations to my former student, Mayor Justlyn Manalo. I'm very, very happy for you. Um, and it's my honor to present this, um, oath with Dr. Roderick Dos Magual, who is not only one of our most brilliant minds, but brilliant hearts. Um, and I appreciate all of the dedication you've, um, given to my family, um, the community, and definitely Daly City. So you've been elected as Vice Mayor of the City of Daly City. It will be your duty to remain ready to take over the duties and responsibilities of the mayor in the event the mayor is incapacitated, removed, or unable to fulfill the duties of the office. Are you ready to take this responsibility?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand and take the oath of office. Repeat after me. I?
I.
Dr. Roderick Dos Magual.
Dr. Roderick Dos Magual.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same?
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well?
And that I will well?
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully, and faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office?
On which I am about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter?
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're, we're still having trouble here, you, Madam Mayor.
I will get closer. Um, at this point, um, we now will move on to our, our, our comment for, um, for our beloved, um, outgoing Mayor Sylvester.
I'll go ahead and start, um, if I may, Madam Mayor. So, uh, Mayor Glenn Sylvester, I can just, you know, you have really, um, been tested and, um, like no other mayor has in, in terms of a crisis. This is certainly a, uh, once-in-a-lifetime kind of a crisis, and, um, it's been critical that leadership, um, lead. And you have done that with your, um, constant messaging to the community, the reassurances, the, uh, public broadcast of your weekly or bi-weekly, um, um, updates. And you're keeping on top of a lot of different issues that we have faced throughout the year. So I want to commend you on your, um, performance, on your leadership, on your compassion and empathy for people, and your willingness to really work hard and work through some really tough times and come up with some really good solutions and, uh, working for the betterment of our community. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've done an excellent job, and, uh, we are a grateful city and a better city because of your work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Buena Ventura, for that, uh, that comment. I, uh, offer any more comments from my colleagues at this time, uh, before I end with mine.
Mayor, I would, I would like to say some. To, um, outgoing Mayor Glenn Sylvester, I just wanted to say thank you. I think when we thought of thi- this time last year, in 2019, we had no clue what we were going to go through this year. And I think that when we think of leadership, we always need that steady hand, and you provided that steady hand for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, if there are any more, is there any more comments? I offer it to the floor. If not, I will, uh, go on with my comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Please?
May I? Okay, thank you. Um, well, Mayor Sylvester, um, as Rod mentioned, Dr. Rod, we never anticipated COVID, and no one understands from a day-to-day basis. And not only do we have COVID, but we know that we face many other issues that we all tackled along as a, as a team together with our city manager and the staff. And that I think that, at the end of the day, regardless of anything, I think when we came out of those sessions or on whatever bumps that were in the road last year, which there were quite some things that were unexpected, that, um, that it culminated with, um, things that, that we kind of like tried to work together and come up with a common solution, and, uh, uh, remember that in those sessions, that it was, uh, trying to come with common ground and clarity when asked, um, even if I asked for clarity, that was given. So for that, and wishing you as continued as, uh, the best this year, as you continue to serve on the council with the rest of us, and that we work collaboratively and, um, and continue that, uh, the same thing as we did in those sessions. And hope that we don't have as many bumps as we did before, um, with Madam Mayor, but, but I'm sure whatever is road in front of us, I'm sure that it will work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember D. Giovanni, for that. Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, stated over and over again that this year was someone that, and that grabbed him. And I do want to thank you for your tremendous leadership. Um, can everyone hear me? Okay, I'm going closer to the mic. Uh, you know, 2020 was unexpected, and you definitely was there to show, ensure that our community, um, had information. And when food insecurity was on the rise, right away, with your leadership and collaboration with Supervisor Canepa, you have brought forth the, you know, food distribution towards ceremony. I mean, that just showed right away how, you know, in, in your leadership, you, um, made moves and understood that that was a huge need and continues to be a, a great need in our own community. Um, you consistently made sure that we were apprised with all the county calls. Uh, nonetheless, we were there, as mentioned steadfast. A man whose passion to give back to others through public service continues. We are so blessed to have you in the helm in 2020. It is evident by your passion and community service that even as you retired, you continue to give back to our community. We see it through your family, your deep friendships, um, how much compassion and care you have for others. Um, so, uh, we thank you so much, and we have something for you. Um, Akonida should be right next to you, your beloved wife. Um, but we have a, a surprise for you. So this is what it says right here, Mayor. In appreciation of your outstanding leadership and service in the year of COVID-2019, 2020, this is a small gesture to say thank you so much for your care and love, um, and service to our community as mayor.
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, Justlyn Manalo. Uh, I can't overemphasize that this would not be possible if it wasn't for you and the rest of council and the city. And my wife hid this from me. I had, I didn't have a clue. I sit in the kitchen all day on the computer, and I'm wondering, did you bring this over? Because I watch her every move, and I, 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 I am so grateful. And, um, thank you all so much. Um, I, again, I have to give kudos to Councilmember Buena Ventura, because when I start going to the far right or the far left or too far up or too far down, he brings me back into that mediocre, and, uh, you know, these things I will never forget. Again, it's a labor of love, and I am so happy and proud of everyone in Daly City, and most of all, I am happy and proud that I'm going to be with the council for another four more years. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you all. It's very much appreciated. I, I got, I gotta stop talking because you're going to make a grown man cry, and, and, uh, I, I don't want to start crying right now. And thank you, Crystal Lynn and, uh, Baby Ronan for staying there. I love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor Sylvester, and, um, for all your dedication. Um, at this point, uh, we will now open it up, uh, from any comments, and I think from our elected officials. I see that we have, um, Senator Scott Weiner, um, and then I also see Assemblymember Phil Ting. Office time for you all, um, uh, to say some words. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, congratulations. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, also to the mayor and council member Sylvester, congratulations on your reelection. Uh, Ms. Abona and Ms. Hoverson, uh, congratulations to you, uh, as well. Um, it's a real honor, uh, to represent, uh, this amazing, uh, community, and, uh, it's been fantastic to work collaboratively with the city council, um, locally and at the state level, uh, making sure that we're always partnering, uh, to move, uh, Daly City, uh, forward. And, uh, it is, uh, these are, are tough times for everyone. There's so much pain in the world right now, and pain in our community, uh, people who are, uh, sick. And we know that more and more people tragically are sick and dying in our community. Uh, healthcare workers who are, uh, just beyond burned out, but still finding that internal strength to keep going, uh, and to save lives. And I'm so hap- I'm so proud of Seaton, uh, and the amazing team there. And thank God, uh, we were able to all work together, uh, to save, uh, that amazing hospital. Um, and so many people who are struggling economically and can't even put food on the table or make rent. And we're going to focus on all of these issues as the legislature goes back in session, uh, we are currently. And then, of course, after the New Year's, uh, and I look forward to continuing to work, uh, with you. And of course, with, um, Assemblyman Ting, um, as we, uh, try to do what we need to do, just to hold everything together. Um, we are at the beginning of the end of this pandemic, uh, with the, the vac- with the vaccine. Uh, it just started today, and I know we're going to get there, um, but it's, as they say, it is, uh, darkest before, uh, the dawn. And so we have to make it through this rough time, but we see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I look forward to getting there together. So congratulations, everyone.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much.
It's great to follow Senator Weiner. I, I just wanted to join him. It's, it's an honor to be part of our Daly City family. Uh, we have really always been able to work and stick together, and I so appreciate, uh, your leadership and the leadership of the rest of the council. It's just been an honor to represent this city, but also to work arm-in-arm with all of you. Uh, like the senator said, this last time, last time this year, we had no idea what was coming. We had no idea. Uh, you know, nothing could have prepared us for COVID. Nothing could have prepared us for our businesses being shut down, our communities told to stay home, everything that we cared about, uh, to be, in essence, taken away. Um, you, you know, there's so many simple things in life that, uh, we just never really fully appreciated till we, we couldn't go inside a coffee shop, uh, couldn't go inside a restaurant, you know, couldn't get our haircut or our hair done or go into a nail salon, all those just basic things that we just take for granted every day. But, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, you stepped up. You were, uh, you've been a first responder your entire career, and it showed because your first responded instincts to protect the community, to protect those who were in danger, uh, came right through. We, uh, went arm-in-arm with the senator, with the council, with Supervisor Canepa. Our first priority was to save Seaton Hospital, and we did that, uh, together. Uh, that was the only silver lining about this pandemic, was the ability to keep Seaton open. Uh, hopefully, it'll, it'll be able to continue to flourish after the pandemic is over. Uh, but that was such, uh, such an important win for all of us. I just want to say that your, uh, your guts and your desire just to, to, your desire just to stay and to fight for our city, for the most vulnerable people, uh, like the senator said, we have so many people who are just suffering. And your constant acknowledgement to make sure that they had access to PPE, that they had access to resources, uh, working to make sure they had access to healthcare. Uh, that was first and foremost, uh, your plan, uh, your desire, uh, and your relationship with this great council have, have pulled that together, and it's been just wonderful to see. I also want to just take this time to congratulate our, our new mayor, Mayor Manalo, and our, uh, new Vice Mayor, Dr. Rod. He's, I think he's the first, uh, you know, doctor to be Vice Mayor for Daly City. We'll have to go back and look. Um, but congratulations. But congratulations to you both. I, I'm looking forward to another great year of working with both of you, but really all, all five of you as a council. It's been just wonderful. We've known each other all for a long time and able to work together really well for quite a long time. So again, congratulations for all the amazing work that you've done just to protect this amazing city and its citizens, and I'm looking forward to a new year. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Assemblymember Phil Ting, for those words. And both of you representing, you know, our Daly City and being there at the, the state Capitol, ensuring that, you know, even during this crisis, we are all working together. And he's giving me my headphones. That's what Ethan's doing. Because can you hear all of them? And so thank you both for your dedication. We know that we can always reach out to you, Senator Scott Wiener, and also Assemblymember Phil Ting in, in, in our communities. And I know you want to say hi. Say hi, Ethan. Those are your elected officials representing you at the state level. Thank you so much. At, at this point, I know there are actually, I think, a message that is, are there any more elected officials that are here currently online, Stephen, that you see?
I do not see any additional in our Zoom meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a comment? I want, first of all, I wanted to congratulate our treasurer, Halverson, and for your continued service and our city clerk, and to wish now that you're incoming mayor that this year be a better year, and that hopefully it'll be COVID-free, and wishing you all the best with health and happiness.
Oh, Mayor, we can't hear you. Lightly, very lightly, we can hear you. A little bit. That, that sounds better.
Does, uh, not use my headphones. Is that better? Clear? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. So at this point, I think we have some co- a, a, a comment from an elected official in the peninsula that Stephen will be reading out loud. Please.
Okay, this is from Wayne Lee of Millbrae. It says, Dear Mayor Sylvester and City Council, I regret that I cannot be present in person and express my thanks to each of you. I am exiting the Millbrae City Council after nine years, but, but I want to express my appreciation for you. I feel I am fortunate to serve Millbrae, San Mateo County, and the state of California as your representative on the Association of Bay Area Governments. Congratulations to Mayor Sylvester for his outstanding leadership during these unprecedented times. Congratulations to presumptively mayor-to-be Jesslyn Manalo. Mayor Manalo was celebrated as an influential Filipino woman and also managed to give birth while serving. Congratulations on the reelection of Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and Jesslyn Manalo. As the president of the California League of Cities Asian Pacific Islanders Caucus and the current president of the San Mateo County API Caucus, we thank Mayor Sylvester and the city of Daly City for supporting and denouncing assaults against Asians. The San Mateo County API Caucus supports diversity and equality. We thank you for your support and protection for the Asians during these difficult times of Chinese villainization due to COVID-19. In summary, it has been a deep, profound honor to work with each of you and say that you are my friend. I wish you, your staff, and Daly City citizens well and best wishes for a safe and healthy future. Warmest, Wayne J. Lee, recovering council member, city of Millbrae.
Thank you so much for, for that, reading that statement and former councilmember Wayne Lee, thank you so much if you're watching for sending that statement over and my leadership in the county and also in regards to ensuring the API community has a voice and you continue to serve in that capacity. So thank you so much. This point, I think we skipped over some comments. I will now. I think that, I think that is it. I think we're going to move on to our regular meeting. Is, is that correct? I think we did move through everything. At this point, I do, I will say some very short comments as we have business ahead of us right around the corner to continue. I just want to be able to thank my colleagues for this opportunity to serve the city of Daly City for another year as mayor. It is truly humbling, and I take this responsibility greatly. I know that moving in this role, I do not take it lightly to my mother, Josefine, who taught me compassion, to Lito, who taught me work and determination, and to my sister Carly Anne, whose courage knows no bounds. My husband and partner, who's been supported through my, supporting me in all my endeavors in my quest through public service and other aspects, always be, always there on my side. You know, this year, we will continue to keep our residents apprised around what is going on. We know that COVID is not over, but we will continue to work together with my colleagues on council to ensure that we will keep everyone up to date and also look towards, as we move towards the year, really implement an action plan, a recovery for our community. I'm looking at the horizon, this, this moment in time, to be hopeful that as the vaccines are being released simultaneously, we will work together to ensure that our local residents and our local economy will be moving towards a direction of recovery. So thank you very much, and I know the work ahead of us continues as we move into our business meeting.
Madam Mayor, I can make a comment, please?
Yes, Mr. I guess, Mr. Always a mayor when you're a mayor, they say.
Mayor, I just want to say having you as mayor and the speech you have just given provide, or I feel a sense of passion and hope under your leadership. And I know that you care so much about the community and others. I want to thank you for your statement that you've just made. I'd like to thank you for the hope that you're providing for all of us. And congratulations to Vice Mayor Dr. These are some new beginnings, but don't worry, as a council, we'll all have your back. And I'm glad that, uh, remember Di Giovanni, we can work together. And again, we'll make and continually to make Daly City a very good place to be. So thank you all. I'm going to do it. And we're there. Thank you. And thank you, Ray. I, I okay, thank you.
And so without further ado, do I have a, a motion to end this meeting, or do we go right into the, the next meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Back in.
Okay, Mayor, we do need to rejoin on a new Zoom link, so this one will be closed.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.